This is Pastor Stevens and welcome to the Tilio Study Session. Pastor Green and I are so excited about sharing with you as we sit down with Minister Mason and we examine the original text, looking at John's presentation of Jesus' earthly ministry. The notion is clear that if we understand more clearly what John is telling us about the ministry of Jesus, we can better see Him, we can better understand Him, and our faith development can be reliable. God bless you. Thank you for joining our study. Let's get at it. Hey guys. Okay, chapter 16. John is a real interesting place, so I need you guys, as we progress from this point forward, we need to be really, really astute, paying close attention to the nuances and all the little things that he might be suggesting that a simple read-through might miss. Now, our next parry could be is fascinating because chapter 16, still participating now in that idea of unbelief and belief, which I say disbelief and unbelief, that John is perpetuating throughout his gospel. If you believe, you inherit; if you don't believe, you'll perish. That was the starting message with Nicodemus and has followed all the way through on John's gospel. Always remember that so that your context lays itself in front of you, and you don't have to create anything, all you have to do is rely on what John is offering you as his understanding and approach to presenting the earthly ministry of Jesus Christ, okay? Now, in verse 16, we're simply looking at a series, a chapter of 16, we're looking at a series of revelations. Why revelations? Well, there, John has just finished a sequence of relationships. You recall, he was talking to the disciples, preparing them for what would emerge. Now, Jesus is thinking very clearly about this, that after He is gone, what's going to happen is a kind of, kind of a community is going to emerge around the disciples themselves, those who believed but were afraid to admit that they believed or to function as believers when He was on the earth because of the strict focus of the Sanhedrin. You recall, for example, on the blind man's parents, after having received, the son receiving their sight, they were very hesitant and very, very removed from owning and saying anything about Jesus one way or the other, and of course, anything and nothing, and them being excommunicated, actually removed from the synagogue, and this is what everybody feared. While they, they saw the Messiah ship unfolding and emerging around this Christ, they favored the glory not of God, but the glory of men, and they feared them and subsequently were quieted. This is, you know, for a long time, I wondered, how could Jesus have done all this wonderful stuff and did all these great things for all these people? And then during the time of his trial, during the time of his march, during that march to Calvary, nobody said a word, you know? Well, it was in keeping with the rejection pattern of the Messiah for sure. No, but that clarity, that reality has its basis in their fears and in their, they're really, in the real sad story that they favor the glory of men rather than the glory of God. That's something to think about in terms of setting up, if you're preaching or teaching, setting up the movement into chapters 15 and 16 for sure. Now, here's the deal now, Jesus in his farewell discourse, which starts at 15:1 through 27, okay? He has, Jesus deals with three relationships that involve the disciples. We've talked about this now, their relationship with Him, their relationship with one another, and their relationship with the world. And the whole point was, this is to support them, to help them to understand that this community that is merging around them will need leadership, and that would be them, and they would have to be among themselves cohesive and in divine, if you will, in Christ. What keeps, what brings them in Christ? Love. Okay, this is, this is the foundational relationship, and the primary relationship they had to be concerned about was the relationship with Christ, and then the relationship with one another, then the relationship with the world. Now, on the heels of the relationship with the world, this is interesting, the idea that the world hated me first, they'll hate you. Ultimately, he even says that the world hated God. Okay, God sent me to the world on a love mission, and really to receive Him from the Father with love, they rejected Him, and they despised Him, and treated Him with much disdain, okay? Now, the discourse on revelation, well, chapter 16 is a discussion of the revelation Jesus intended to give his disciples preparatory, to prepare them for their coming mission. There are some things that they just won't be able to figure out on their own, y'all, okay? And that he would have to, would involve revelatory knowledge, that their response and their understanding would be clearly about what was revealed to them by the Christ Himself. This is very exciting, okay? And now, the very first is four revelations. Let me look him out, so I can read them off there. I hope you have yours available. The revelation of rejection, which is 16:1 through 4, the revelation of the Holy Spirit, which is 16:5 through 15, the revelation of Jesus' reappearance, that's 16 through 24, and then the revelation of the Father, that's 25 through 33, okay? So, all four of these revelations are vital, and they come straight from Jesus. And so, he opens, John opens a discourse, now because he wants the reader to really follow how Jesus was meticulously preparing these twelve to do the work. This is so important, to do the greater work, okay? Now, if these were the revelatory realities of the core group, remember in 15, in the vine sequence, Jesus takes the vine and applies that metaphor to the twelve and expands it, okay, extends it out to everyone that believes. All believers, those who believe are in Him, okay? And the vine is, as the branch is in the vine, and what connects the branch to the vine is love, okay? So, the revelation of, I mean, the discourse against the world. Well, it makes sense that he would link the first revelation, which is the revelation of rejection. It's sequential. If the world rejected Him, I mean, if the world hated Him, and then would hate them, but just a fixed mindset because of their connection to Jesus, the world would hate the disciples, then the world rejected Jesus, and then so the world will reject the disciples. And so, he wants them to understand the level of rejection and what it's about. So, he reveals this to them. Now, listen, that gives us pause, because reveal knowledge, reveal knowledge is how we come to understand the basis of our faith as believers. We are not, we were not there. Many preachers, when they stand in the pulpit, they preach as if we were walking with Jesus, that we seen Him turn water into wine, that we seen Him feed divine thousand. No, no, that is the testimony of those who were there, and we believe that testimony by faith. And what we know of the Christ and of His kingdom and of His Father is revelatory. It's revealed to us through the testimony, revealed to us through the scriptures, the inspiration of scripture, the testimony of the apostles. So, this notion of revelatory knowledge is vital to the contemporary believer. If we're going to succeed as disciples, we're going to do the work, the greater work, until He returns, and we're going to be receptive to the movement of the Holy Spirit, then we're going to be extra sensitive to revelatory knowledge. What is revealed to us, not, I heard a preacher say, "We shouldn't spend so much time in biblical, biblical knowledge, but biblical knowledge is good, but there is this revelatory knowledge, there is the knowledge of the Spirit." And he went off into that, and he's, he's on the wrong pattern. But the acknowledgement, there is no movement in the Spirit apart from biblical knowledge, because the revelation is not ethereal, it's not floating around in the air. The revelation is what Jesus taught, what is revealed through the teachings of Jesus. The Holy Spirit reveals that unto us. So, the first revelation that he offers us is a revelation of rejection. And as we get deeper into the revelatory lessons that Jesus offered the disciples, that will become more apparent, okay? Here, first of all, in chapter 16, simply four verses for the very first revelatory teaching, and it is impacted heavily, of course. Let's read. "I have said these things to you to keep you from falling away. They will put you out of the synagogue. Indeed, an hour is coming, when those who kill you will think that by doing so, they are offering worship to God. And they would do this because they have not known the Father or Me. But I have said these things to you, so that when the hour comes, you may remember that I told you about them." In this section, as I say, as I often say when I'm teaching Mark's Gospel, Mark's Gospel is the shortest of the Gospels. But the brevity does not suggest by any means that it's not heavily impacted with wisdom and truths that'll blow your mind, okay? And so, I bring that to bear here at 16:1 through 4, okay? John links this section with the final discourse on rejection simply by sharpening the warning that he's already given to them concerning the hatred of the world. "The world's going to hate you," Jesus says, "you hated Me first." Well, he sharpens that by bringing a sense of focus to how the manifestation of their hatred, it's going to be bold, blatant rejection, okay? So, he opens up this discussion before even trying to even discuss it. He opens it up with a simple statement, "I've said these things to you to keep you from falling away." It's encouraging, it's strengthening, it's giving them a sense of stability. The original text, I'm footnoting in the river, knew the right standard, to keep you from stumbling, okay? So, to give you a sense of what falling away means, stumbling, being troubled, being apprehended, being confused, being hurt, all the things that would end up the idea of you having smooth sailing. In other words, it ain't fixing to be easy, Georgia style, y'all. It ain't fitting to be easy, okay? It just ain't fitting to be. I ain't gonna play with chai, stud, y'all. Okay, anyway. He says, and so he wants to give them a sense of, an applied sense of rejection. He, he applied this revelation particularly to their local conditions and predicted that they would suffer excommunication from the synagogue and even death. They'll put you out of the synagogue, excommunication. See, that was really heavy, that's really heavy. Get out and don't come back. The devil has to consume you. You are without honor before God. You know, they go ahead, baby, let you have it. And they throw you out of the synagogue. It tears up, the Jewish consciousness just wore out. "You mean, I don't have a place? I'm not allowed?" Oh my goodness, they lost their mind, okay? Because they were very synagogue, temple, tabernacle, synagogue people. Because this is where God introduced Himself and showed Himself strong in the temple, in the tabernacle, and the wandering, the temple, the tabernacle, in the, in the temple, in the temple period, in the synagogue. This was, these were, these were the domain of God. So, to be excommunicated would be, that'd be pretty heavy, baby. Yeah, you pretty much through for a Jew, okay? Now, here's the thing that's interesting that, that is really challenging. Like I mentioned to you, let me go ahead and reiterate this. Like I mentioned to you before, the episode, the healing of the blind man, Franch is a kind of graphic analogy, where he was expelled from the synagogue because of his defense of Jesus, okay? That's at 9:22 and 34. I overstated earlier, I put it on his parents, but his parents feared it, but they actually excommunicated him and not his parents, my bad. I stand corrected there, I need to fix that, okay? "The raising of Lazarus, so disturbed the Jews, that they tried to kill both Jesus and the Nazis," okay? That's the 12:10. So, here is, in these two examples, the sense of the debt and the grip of the rejection, okay? It's not just, "We don't like you, go away." No, it's like, "Get out, God be damned you." And anything connected to Jesus could subsequently involve them killing you as well. So, it was on that deep level, that was the climate that they were in, okay? And you recall, at the little damn banquet they were having, Jesus told them, "They looking for you too now, brother. Because when they see you, you are a deep reminder of those things I've claimed, and they don't want to hear it, and so they want to kill you just like they want to kill me, bruh man." Okay? I remember preaching a sermon, "The Other Target", talking about those of us who are like Lazarus, connected to, profoundly connected to the Word of Christ, okay? Now, he goes into this B portion, verse 2. "Indeed, an hour is coming, when those who kill you..." Listen to this now, this distortion, and this is a deep sense of distortion. And I want you to hear it that way. "Those that kill you will think that by doing so, they are offering worship to God." Thou shall not kill, the commandment, thou shall not kill, that crowd of folk? Hmm, see how deep the distortion is? It's not, it's not about a casual dislike, or you have your opinion, and I have my opinion. No, no, the vein, the flow of blood is deeper than that, okay? And one of the things he was trying to get the disciples to recognize is that level of rejection, deep sense of rejection. It is, it causes us to pale when we think in terms of conflicts we have. You know, I remember being a young preacher around the season, so-called seasoned pastors, and how they used me. They saw gifting, and they saw something that they never seen before in me, and they tried to, tried to control it and contain it to their benefit, you know? And so, they let me do the altar call prayer, because I could say, I could humbly say things to God and that disturbed the mind, and people were very provoked. I was very provocative without really knowing what I was doing, because I was just immolating what I was seeing, and I didn't like myself, because I didn't like public prayers. And so, I would, I would just, you know, I would just bedazzle them, because I couldn't preach, they wouldn't let me preach, so I would do it in my prayers. And the pastors would hate me, but they would use me at the altar call prayer before they preached their sermon, "Get the people there, you know." And I thought that was my function, and in my ignorance, I let them use me that way. And then one Sunday morning, I wouldn't do it. And then later, I found myself going to seminary, so I wouldn't have to do it. And to this very day, to this very moment, this very hour, I have a real serious issue with public prayers. I don't do many public prayers, I don't like to do public prayers. But I just, the idea of being in such a delusion about themselves, so arrogantly involved in themselves, that they could take something simple and offering a prayer and manipulate it into a consciousness that benefited them. Those were distorted, sick people, and I knew it, but I didn't, I didn't understand it, and I was participating in it, and then know it. They, they, they will kill you, and see, they've already killed Jesus, okay? At this point, Jesus is saying to them, "And this is what's going to happen. They gonna kill me, and they gonna feel real good about it. They gonna walk away from the tomb feeling wonderful, and this is what's going to happen to you." You see? And they not gonna believe that I've been raised from the dead anymore than you believe in right now, but when I'm gone, boom, they gonna treat you the same way they treated me. So, he wanted them to have a real sense of that deeper level, that localized, that centralized consciousness of the rejection of the church and anybody that heard them connecting themselves with this weird Christ, with this whole, this whole obscure movement, why this man was bitterly claiming to be the Son of God, and he was claiming to be the Messiah. Whoo, this was a terrible movement. And so, he was saying to them that when I'm gone, I won't be able to protect you from this. They'll think, they'll justify what they do as a worship to God. Notice how he brings in the revelatory notion of deluded, distorted in worship. The idea of murder pleases God as an offering of worship to Him. See, that's deep. Y'all gotta hear that, that's real deep. "The God who commanded them through Moses, thou shall not kill, thou should do no murder." Now, they have distorted it and confounded it in their own conditional claim. Now, they're saying something that this is an offering to God, to murder. That reversal, that, that, that way of getting around the mosaic law while claiming to be true to the covenant of Moses with God, with His people, you know, circumventing while at the same time claiming the worship and the honor and the love. There is the preaching end of this text right there, there it is right there. How we, how we use what we want and give it to God the way we want, and then to tell ourselves at the benediction that we have worshipped God. Our worship and our growth and our movement is meticulous, meticulously designed the way Jesus laid it out. One iota away from what Jesus has declared is in this place, is in the delusion of offering God worship that God is not receiving. He's not seeing it as worship. How could God consider His Son offered in sacrifice as an offering of worship, and those who believe Him as an offering of sacrifice and worship to Him? It's very reminiscent of Israel, when the contract was, of course, when you go into the settlement period, into the, into the land of Capra, into Canaanic land. "Don't get involved with these Canaanite religions, don't, don't get involved." And they got involved, and soon they were offering the very, very same incense that they burned in their offerings to y'all, where Thanksgiving and praise and worship to y'all way. They burned in the worship of Baal and other of the idol gods, and with God himself who said to Israel, "Your incense, your offerings, come before Me." And they, they present a nauseous experience in the nostrils of God. And something very, very, that's paraphrased, because that was the idea. Here it is. One has to be very, very careful and very, very focused, very, very careful, and extremely focused on what you call worship to God. My goodness, this is, this is a powerful, powerful revelation, and it's one that needs to be embraced in the contemporary church even, even now. Because Sunday after Sunday, they go into worship, and they never mention the name of Christ. No teachings regarding Christ, no confessions regarding Christ, no focus according to how to think and live in this world from Christ-given principles, no mention of the Holy Spirit's ministry and the teachings of Jesus Christ, simply God, 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 Father, God, 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 Father, God, God. Give Him this, this title, and then we recognize Him as Most High God. But we have no real love that connects us to the Christ, that gives God ear to the voices of them that call on His name. Nah, to call on the name of the Lord is to obey His Christ. The lordship of His Christ is how we reach God, and no other mechanism, and no other way. Fasting, praying, huckabucking, you know, having B3 bumping, none of that. The praise dancing, none of that, none of that gets His attention, none of that gets His attention. If there is not a profound sense of love and connection, and if the world loves you, go back to the discourse, if the world loves you, if you have, "I have everything I need, God is just blessing me." No, the world loves you, it seems. Think on that, connect that idea, stop making the blessings of God things and stuff. Start paying attention to what really, truly blesses God and what really, truly provokes God's blessing on the believer, it's His Christ. You see, the delusion of the enemy is at work in everything that God accomplishes with the believer. Notice that, these Jews are leaving, they, he says, "They'll kill you," okay? And, and, and think, and will think that by doing so, by killing you, they are offering worship to God. That is the key, that is, that is, that is the term, and you've got, you've got to take some time, brethren. Take some time and think about that. It's four verses, but I told you, four very dangerous verses if ignored, because they're revelatory. This is the first revelation, the revelation of rejection, closely attached to the last discourse, the hatred of the world. Now comes the revelation, Jesus says, it's not just hatred in a sense that you understand it emotionally, it's serious. That becomes certain, pay attention. And verse 3, he ties to that notion of the delusional worship, "and they will do this because they have not known the Father or Me." Now, this becomes, this becomes a mitigating statement. This is something that, that Pastor Green, you and I, we've been talking a great deal about, is how to, how to discuss with the people of God on the height of their wrong and error without blatant rejection, without prohibition beating, you know, without taking the gospel and weaponizing and beating folk on the head and making people, bringing people to places of feeling horrible about themselves. Notice what he says, "And they will do this, this terrible thing, they will do this because they have not known the Father, or they have not known Me." This belief, that's where he's focusing on, persistent disbelief. Persistent disbelief isolates the believer from the Father and the Son. The relationship between the Son and the Father, that the Father sent the Son, and that He equipped him with everything that, that, every, every, equipped him with the ability to resolve every human need and to offer him the eternal blessing of eternal life, if he believes. So, he's saying it's out of this persistent disbelief, they simply did not believe. Okay, pay attention now, they did not believe that Jesus was the Son of God, and by inheritance, they do not believe that the disciples of Jesus are valuable even to God as well. So, they kill the Son. Bingo. That's how they deluded themselves into thinking they were offering worship to God by killing the disciples and by having killed the Son. Because they just didn't know. Father, forgive them for they know not what they do out of pure, raw ignorance, okay? And when I'm talking about intellectual ignorance, we're just talking about unaware. A refusal to believe left them unaware and in that, in, in that state of unaware and being unaware, better stated, being unaware, they behaved with a, with a self-imposed knowledge that caused them to do, to undo literally what they were trying to do, which was worship God. And instead they were walking to worship in their ignorance and break His heart. Pretty impacting, is it not? Not that they were evil, Benjamin, not that they were, they were terrible people. They were the people of God who knew Him not and knew not His Son. I'm reminded of during the earlier days of the church. You know, when, when um, when Jesus had gone away and the assignment now Luke says, if you read the book of Acts, Luke says that in the first half of the book of Acts, the focus is on, on re reclaiming the Jews because they killed Him. And Peter said, now, let me tell you something, now, y'all killed Him. Ain't no doubt about that, y'all killed Him. But always mitigating, lessening of the act by saying, "Y'all killed Him in accordance to scripture." They mitigated uh the act. Here it is. They got that pattern from, from uh Jesus Himself. It's revelation, it's a revelation. He said, listen, yes, they did this horrible thing, but they did it in ignorance. Which is a mandate because they didn't know. That you bring them to knowing. You give them a chance to come to know, which means that those who do not know, you subject yourselves to them mitigating on their behalf. And only those who can hear that will respond accordingly. The rest, they will kill you and contend that they've done it as a worship offering uh to the very God that has declared to them, thou shall not kill. The distortion, see, that's the, that's the deal. That's the, that's the dialectical that you're in, all of us, that's the dialectical that we're in. Um, so as you, as I said, trying to say to you earlier, so when we start thinking about the conflicts we get in and how it pales when we start facing what the revelation really is. You know, um, preachers who, who are so traditional and so caught in the way, that's not the way of a preacher, you know, those kind of folk, you know? They know not what they do. They know not what they do, not what they say, but they think they do. Okay, um, it is the movement, persistent disbelief that will march Jesus of Gaal Gaal through. And that persistent disbelief becomes rooted in our experience as we follow Him and maintain those teachings until our Lord's return. How, how well we live in their disbelief. Okay, that's why you see the discourse of the world, how you wanted to understand how the world would feel instead of trying to be a part of the world and, and deciding that, you know, that things that you have of the world means that the Lord, no, 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 no. The world, the world will love you too. If you love the world, world will love you back. If, if you love the things of this world, the world will award you with the things of this world so that you can love the world. But Jesus said, "I've selected you from the world" and the pattern is the world will hate you. Be very careful, be very guarded. It's a very good discussion, it really is, okay? Um, but at three, he says, "They will do this because they have not known the Father or Me." There is no history there. You know, they have known me for years, but they have no history of knowing me. You understand what I'm saying? This is, I love this, okay? I like stuff like this, okay? You've been in the church, but the church has not been in you. My church has not been in you. Apart from me, I know you're not. You have never known God, my Father, and you've never known Me. Serious. "But I have said these things to you," verse four says, "so that when the hour comes, you may remember that I told you about that. I told you so." We should not be shocked, set aside, set back, appalled. You know how we do, I can't believe it, that's crazy, oh my goodness. No, no, that's not our reaction to, to the, the revelatory realities of our Christ. And that's why Paul writes consistently when he writes, "For we know..." "This we remember, for we know." So as they, as they uh move out of ignorance, you can expect when the truth of Jesus, the revelation of God, truths in the Christ are made standard and, and, and you stand firm with them out of their ignorance, they will do some really crazy things and say some really crazy things because they don't know. Because they've never known the Father, or Jesus says they've never known Me. I give you this revelation so that you won't be called guard. Well, these four verses, very impacting. This is the first of four revelations that are given to us in the last and final discourse uh that Jesus is having in the private ministry according to John. Be advised, God bless your hearts and be prayerful, uh and we'll see you guys the next time out.
Well, it seems our time has come and gone. It's been an exciting hour. Just remember now that if you are a part of the New Covenant Search, all you need is a link to uh the YouTube channel, my YouTube channel, Healing Hands Ministries, and you can find this playlist available to you. We trust that we've been a help to you. We're looking forward to sharing with you again on next Thursday. God bless your hearts, we'll see you there.